6:25 PM and this is a meeting of the Licensing Board. Our first order of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes from May 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next agenda item for the Licensing Board pertains to the current licensing year 2022, 2023, and it's an appointment of a successor agent for Pint and Chaser LLC at 160 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the next set items, one through nine, are for license renewals of 2023 through 2024, and I've asked Chief to give us just a quick background on that.
Sure. Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to explain. We have a very robust system of license renewal. This is the standard annual renewal. Our department, Lieutenant McAndrews, who's in our honor guard now, who won't acknowledge your presence based on protocol, and Lizbeth and her team worked very closely to review all of the applications. As you're aware, if we feel there's an issue or concern, we're not shy about getting you that information and presenting in front of this elected body. We have no issues with this group of current annual review.
Thank you, Chief. Because these are pretty typical annual renewals, I will make a motion to approve the Class A combination liquor license, Class B license, original Class B license, Class B beer, Class C wine, Reserve Class B, Reserve Class B license for CRG and Sons at Oak and Hog, Coin and Precious Metals, or Stone Dealer License Renewal, Massage License Renewal, and the Secondhand Jewelry Article Pawn Broker License Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on those? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with no more business before the Licensing Board, I will adjourn the Licensing Board meeting. Again, it's Monday, May 15th, close to 6:30 PM. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter was posted in accordance with Wisconsin State statute. I'll ask our clerk to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
I confirm.
Thank you. And this is our common council meeting. We're going to take a few of these items first, and then we'll go back and recess and take care of our finance. But at this time, we have all aldermen present and have recognized a quorum, and I'd ask everyone to please stand for the posting of our colors.
Order. Ready, cut. Right shoulder. Ready, cut. Present. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Ready, cut. Order. Parting five. Ready, step. Ready two. Ready two. Ready two. Ready two. Call. Order. Ready. Cut. Order. 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 That's our West Bend Police Department Honor Guard, and I would love to do that for every council meeting if they would be willing to come back. Thank you very, very much. Our first item of business is approval of the Common Council regular meeting minutes from May 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Model and Zingsheim. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into our presentations tonight, our first being the Police Week proclamation, which I will read. Whereas Congress has designated May 15th of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week surrounding it to be Police Week, this is a time to honor the memory of those officers who sacrificed their lives in service to the public, and whereas, more than ever, our nation depends upon local law enforcement as our first line of defense, and it is important for citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of our law enforcement officers and agencies. And whereas, we applaud our law enforcement officers for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our citizens value the courage and devotion with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. Whereas, on Police Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we express our sincere gratitude for the selfless public servants who wear the badge and put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and we pay respect for those who lost their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore, I, Joel Ongard, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby recognize May 14th through 20th, 2023, as Police Week in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation by flying their American flag at half-staff in honor of all fallen officers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief?
Thank you. I appreciate this moment. The meaning of Police Week is truly to honor those who have lost their lives serving their communities, so I ask that we take a moment of silence to remember Officer, from the Milwaukee Police Department, Officer Peter Jervin, from the Sheetteck Police Department, Officer Emily Brydenbach, from the Cameron Police Department, Officer Hunter Shield, and just recently from the St. Croix Sheriff's Department, Deputy Katie Lysing. All four public servants, young brothers, sisters, sons and daughters murdered and taken away from their ability to serve our communities. I ask that we have a moment of silence. I appreciate your kind words, and I can't express, I know I say it many times, but I mean it. I am a little emotional right now and extremely proud to be partners with every member of our department, and I thank the community for their support. I thank our fellow law enforcement officers for the work they do in their county and all the smaller, I'm sorry, all the other jurisdictions, excuse me, not smaller, other jurisdictions in Washington County that protect and serve their community as well. I invite all of you to attend on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 17th, at 7:00 PM at the Fair Park, the Washington County Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony, 7:00 PM. It's a very touching and moving ceremony to honor our officers. Ask that you all attend if possible. So, thank you. I know that was a bit heavy. Now we get to move on to some brighter things.
We're going to continue by adding a new officer to our force here tonight, and so Robert Koper. A lot of people like to call him Copper as a cop, but he is, it's Robert Koper, so why don't you take that away?
Very good. Thank you.
Rob, you want to come on up here?
Scared. Not yet. We talk a lot in our profession about finding the right people to join our team. Our entire process is determining whether they're a fit for our department and our community and were fit for them. I made a pledge to all of our officers and dispatchers and clerical that we would not hire anyone who didn't deserve to work with them, who didn't deserve to work for our community. I am proud to tell you, our new officer, Robbie, I'm going to call you Copper. Deserves to work with us, our team and the community, so we're so very proud to have him here. Robbie comes to us, lives in Franklin, spent the year playing college ball, so college baseball, so he'll fit in with our culture here in West Bend, and ended up graduating from the University of Minnesota. Just recently, in fact, May 11th, last Thursday, graduated from the Waukesha Tech College 720 recruit school. I was very honored to be his guest at the ceremony and sit with his family, mom and dad, who we'll meet in a minute, his sisters, his grandma, and share the experience with him. It was wonderful. So, the community, please welcome your new police officer, Robbie Copper. Oh. So, as is our tradition, and I make no bones about it, we are borrowing from the Fire Department. I love their ceremonies of involving the families, how important it is for us to know that we have our families supporting us. Our job can be really all encompassing without our families. We can get very tumbled in on our mission to protect and serve. I ask that the families help us to make sure that we stay full people, to make sure we don't forget the why, as Chief Thompson challenged us after graduation, the why we became these officers. So with that, I'll use mine as the basis.
Have you step close to the mic? Yes, please. Okay. I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robbie Koper.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the City of West Bend.
In the City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And of the Constitution. Of the State of Wisconsin.
The State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. 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 Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
This is a special time of year in our police department where we recognize officers who have really gone above and beyond, so to speak, and Chief's going to take us through some of the awards, and I was privy to some of the stories of what these officers did to deserve these awards, and I know a lot of you are here tonight to see this, and I know you'll be impressed, and so, Chief, take it away.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Actually, I'm going to turn the ceremony over to Captain Rollinger, so I can stand with the officers as they're honored. Not a small thing to tell you truly that we're going to honor some specific officers tonight, but I guarantee you there's something that happened over the last year for every single member of our department, every single member of our department, that would have warranted them standing here, so I thank you for giving us the time to honor these officers in the building. Cap?
Good evening. On April 12th, 2023, the Department Awards Committee met pursuant to department policy to review this year's department award recommendations. The committee is comprised of one lieutenant, one sergeant, one detective, one officer, one dispatcher, and one administrative clerical position. The committee reviewed submissions from fellow employees for actions and performance of duty which the employee felt deserved special recognition. Tonight, we are presenting the Life Saving Medal and the Meritorious Service Award. The criteria for receiving the awards are, for the Life Saving Medal, performance of an act on or off duty which through prompt and alert action saves or endeavors to save the life of another, and Meritorious Service Award is presented for excellence in a particular assignment or task, or for a continuing level of service characterized as outstanding and worthy of commendation. Such conduct is similar to, but not rise to the level of distinguished service, but is more meritorious than that demonstrated of a letter of commendation. So with that, we will start with Officer Adam Deleschi and Officer Kent Olson. They will be receiving the Life Saving Medal. On September 23rd, 2022, Officer Deleschi and Officer Olson were assigned to a high school football game. After the game had ended, the officers were alerted by citizens that a man had collapsed on the bleacher steps. Officer Deleschi and Officer Olson arrived and found a 62-year-old man unresponsive. Officer Deleschi and Officer Olson, as well as a few bystanders, moved the man to the stairs and onto a flat platform. Officer Deleschi checked for a pulse while Officer Olson ran to retrieve an AED. Officer Deleschi did not locate a pulse and immediately began chest compressions. Officer Olson returned with an AED and applied it to the man. The officers and bystanders delivered two shocks from the AED and continued CPR until paramedics from the West Bend Fire Department arrived and took over care. The man eventually regained a pulse and consciousness, was transported to a hospital for further treatment. The man has since made a full recovery. The man's doctors have told him that without the quick and immediate intervention by officers and bystanders, the man would not have survived. And one side note, that man is here, Tom Wensloff. Where are you? There he is, in the back. He is very grateful and very appreciative and has made the circuit for a lot of these types of ceremonies, so, Life Saving Award. Tonight Officer Brook will be receiving a Meritorious Service Award. On January 19th, 2023, at 9:30 PM, Officer Chris Brook responded to a request from the Washington County Sheriff's Department for a Spanish interpreter. Deputy sheriffs were at a residence in Allentown for a report of a man who was highly intoxicated, was armed with a knife, and was holding two people in the residence against their will. Deputies were not able to effectively communicate with the suspect due to a language barrier. Officer Brook responded to the scene and immediately began dialogue with the suspect in Spanish from the backyard. Officer Brook kept the suspect in conversation with him as much as possible at the rear of the residence while he also maintained communication with the two hostages in the upper level of the residence. Officer Brook encouraged the hostages to attempt to barricade the doors to their room and to take cover in the far corner away from the windows. Sergeant Hergis from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, who was on scene that night, said Officer Brook's ability to preoccupy the suspect with conversation and negotiation allowed the opportunity for deputies on scene to gain a needed tactical information regarding entry points and the layout of the residence by being able to move around the perimeter without detection. It eventually allowed for tactical elements to set up on the residence for entry without the suspect's knowledge. The hostages eventually were rescued, and the suspect was apprehended after he tried to flee from the residence. Officer Brook's actions kept an armed intoxicated man from harming hostages, himself, or officers. Congratulations. Officer Tamara Cheek, Officer Chris Brook, don't go too far, and Sergeant Chad Kohler, receiving the Meritorious Service Award tonight. On October 4th, 2023, 2022, typo on my notes here, at 2:14 AM, an officer responded to an apartment on Barton Avenue for a report of children yelling and screaming. The officer responded but did not hear any noises and did not receive an answer at the apartment door. The officer requested other officers follow up later in the day to contact the occupants of the apartment. Another officer later spoke with the mother over the phone, who stated she was at work and unable to meet. The officer arranged for a face-to-face meeting later on to check on the children. Officer Tamara Cheek was assigned to that follow-up and called the mother to confirm, but the mother rescheduled. Officer Cheek continued attempts to meet with the mother in person, speak with and speak with the children. On October 5th, 2022, Officer Cheek was able to meet with the mother and the four children, ages seven, six, four, and one, outside of the apartment. Officer Cheek noted the children appeared dirty and had matted hair. The mother refused to allow Officer Cheek into the apartment at the time and scheduled the time to visit the apartment later on. Officer Cheek reported her observations to Child Protective Services. From October 7th, 2022 to October 12th, 2022, the mother rescheduled the apartment visit four different times. On October 12th, Officer Cheek and Officer Brook went to the apartment to attempt contact. The officers could hear noises inside the apartment but received no answer at the door. Officer Cheek made phone contact with the mother, who claimed to not be home, and refused to allow officers inside the residence. The mother then hung up on Officer Cheek. Sergeant Kohler obtained a master key from the apartment manager, and entry was forced into the apartment to check the safety and well-being of the children. The officers located the mother, father, and the four children inside the apartment. The apartment was unlivable, with refuse, rotten food everywhere, and no working bathroom. The children appeared to be unbathe, suffering from dental issues, and appeared generally unhealthy. Officers again contacted Child Protective Services, who responded to the scene and assessed the home and the children. Officers could not locate clean clothing for the children. Officer Brook, who has children of the same age, went to his residence to retrieve clean clothing for the children. Child Protective Services ultimately removed the children, placing them in a foster home. Officer Brook and Officer Cheek and Sergeant Kohler conducted a thorough investigation with nearly 400 photographs of the children and the apartment. This led to the arrest of both parents on felony child neglect charges. According to Detective Lieutenant Grinwall, the investigation and reports were superior despite the horrid conditions and situation. The action of these officers pressing the issue and ultimately gaining access to the apartment likely saved the children's lives as conditions in the apartment were not suitable for humans. Congratulations.
I'm going to read a resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion afterwards. This is a resolution honoring Fire Chief Gerald Kudick. Whereas Chief Gerald Kudick began his service with the West Bend Fire Department on October 15th, 1984, as an on-call firefighter, moving to an on-call rescue squad in 1986. And whereas, on January 23rd, 1989, Chief Kudick was appointed to the City of West Bend as a career firefighter AEMT, and in the same year was appointed to the Fire Prevention Bureau as a fire inspector, and earned a bachelor's degree in fire service management. And whereas Chief Kudick advanced within the department with numerous promotions, and on April 16th, 1997, he was promoted to battalion chief. And whereas, in March of 2000, Chief Kudick accepted the additional responsibility as the interim fire chief. And in 2001, he was selected firefighter of the year by the Washington County Council of the American Legion. And whereas, on December 22nd of 2012, Chief Kudick accepted the position of fire chief. And whereas, Chief Kudick demonstrated exemplary leadership and a commitment to the West Bend Fire Department, City of West Bend, and its citizens for 38 years of service. Therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Chief Gerald Kudick and expresses its deep appreciation for his loyal and dedicated service to the City of West Bend. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you get that? Everybody motioned in second on that one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I've been fortunate, actually that sounds like it just made me really old. I've been very fortunate through my career. I got to do the job I loved, got to do it for a lot of years, got to be promoted in the system. I'm a West Bend kid and grew up in West Bend and my whole life in West Bend, so all my goals here have been achieved. I've been fortunate to work for great mayors, from Mayor Miller, who I always call my favorite mayor, to our newest mayor, Mayor Ongard, numerous council members, complete support from the Police and Fire Commission, but most importantly, the support I've had from the firefighters. You've heard numerous stories tonight, we saw a new police officer. All I ask in my departure at the end of next week is that you continue that support for the men and women blue and the firefighters. They're the true heroes. They're the ones out there, day in and day out, making a difference in people's lives, day in and day out, one call at a time. So, please, if you do anything for me, continue to support them like you've continued to support me over the years, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief, I know you know this, because you say it to retirees in your department all the time, but you are always, always welcome in the Fire Department and in City Hall, and I know there's a group that kind of gets together once a month, retirees, and I hope you become an active member of that group. And we do have job applications in Parks and Rec or DPW if you want to keep working here, but anyway, just know that you are always, always welcome here in the city and in the Fire Department, so. I know a lot of you are interested in the business that we have yet to conduct tonight, and you're welcome to stay, but at this point, I am going to recess, common council. If you would like to leave, this would be the time to do that, and we'll just wait a minute, and then we'll get into finance, Chad, in just a minute, so thank you all for coming.
Okay, the Finance Committee meeting for May 15th is called to order, and we have five items on the agenda. Item number one, the approval of the minutes from the May 1st meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have two motions to approve.
Second.
So Alderman Allen, and seconded by Alderman Model. Okay? All, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two, a resolution accepting a donation from the Sons of the American Legion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, a resolution accepting State of Wisconsin Department of Administration grant funds for upgrades to public safety answering point systems or infrastructure. Chief?
Thank you. Again, I really appreciate you allowing us the time to celebrate the department tonight. I'm very much in your debt. On March 15th of 2022, Governor Evers announced a $50 million ARPA grant fund program that was going to local jurisdictions, law enforcement agencies, based on a formula on public population served and some crime data. The City of West Bend was awarded just under $92,000 based on that formula. If you remember, at the time, we celebrated and talked about needs versus wants and talked about things like perhaps a command post or a K-9 unit, but I did pledge to you that we would do it in a very much measured and strategic manner. So when we looked at needs versus wants, it became very apparent that our need is to update our dispatch center into current technology. A quick summary is, all dispatch systems are analog. Nobody uses analog anymore, except all the new hipsters listening to vinyl, right? It's all digital, so we need to upgrade our system to vinyl. The state had a very strong grant program through the Department of Military Affairs. Unfortunately, that was only allowed to be granted to one PSAP in the county, and the county board chose to take that grant, which we understood. So, in strategic and measured fashion, we reviewed what we could do best with that $92,000. We worked strongly with our vendor Baycom, and I'm proud to tell you that we have paid[1783.21]
We worked strongly with our vendor Baycom, and I'm proud to tell you that we have paid for about 50% of our transition to the next-generation 911 SC net network. That will allow for GPS-specific location, a digital format, so today's day and age, no one calls from a landline anymore. It's all digital. They can, will be able to text, share that. It is, there's been a statement saying you can remain on the analog legacy system, but we all know that's a fallacy. Anyone that doesn't make this upgrade, they won't be able to maintain their dispatch center within the next, I would say, five years. So we made that decision to fund. On March 3rd, we received after lengthy back-and-forth with Department of Administration, we sent an MOU with the governor to provide those funds, and I'm proud to say that we have completed that work and the funds have been transferred into the city fund. So I'm asking for two things today. One, for you, to allow me to accept that grant formally, and then two, to move it from our grant account into our PD revenue account, or expense account, rather.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you get that? Okay. I'm glad you did, because I didn't. Any discussion? All those in favor, thank you very much, Chief. That's good news, and it solidifies our own PSAP here and for the future. So all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Number four, a resolution to authorize the acceptance and transfer of funds for downtown Master Plan and Action Plan. Jess?
In March 2023, the council approved the city of West Bend to move forward with Graef, a consultant who will be conducting our downtown Master Plan and Action Plan. Tonight, we're requesting, well, back in March, some of our senior leaders in the private sector also committed to funding the project if we completed the project. So tonight, we're just requesting that we can accept the funds from our private sector leaders and so that we can pay Graef for their work.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a resolution to authorize the acceptance and transfer of funds for downtown Business Improvement District.
Sure. With the Main Street Reconstruction Project going on currently, we have a marketing committee that's been created and working together for many months now, and several groups and organizations outside of the city of West Bend and bid have offered to support our marketing efforts by donating to the marketing budget to promote businesses and visitation during the project. So this resolution is allowing us to accept those donations and support that will be from the West Bend Area Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown West Bend Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. Thank you very much.
We have a motion by Alderman Allen. It sounds like Alderman Sternig has the second. Thank you, Jess. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to thank the people that donated to the effort. Downtown West Bend is shaping up.
Very good. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
No further business?
No further business. I adjourn the Finance Committee.
Thank you. We'll now reconvene our Common Council meeting for May 15th, and we have an item that needs a public hearing tonight, and I'll just remind the public that the documents for this item are posted on our city website, as well as our agenda packet. This is the 2022 MS4 Annual Report and Storm Water Management Program. So Max, why don't you take it away, and then we'll open it up for a public hearing?
Thank you. I'll try not to be too long, Chief. And then, so this is our annual public hearing for our MS4 report. The city of West Bend is covered by an MS4 permit from the DNR to be able to discharge stormwater into the waters of the state. And annually, we submit a report showing how we comply with the permit requirements, and we give the public an opportunity to give input and comment on that report. I will quickly highlight the different sections of this report. We have a public education and outreach slash public involvement and participation item. In the memo, we described the different actions covered by the city during the last year under this permit. And also, a new item that we will develop in the coming years for stream and shoreline management, and green infrastructure. So this is a new requirement of the permit that we need to implement in the coming years of this term. Second item is the illicit discharge detection and elimination. So we're doing inspections yearly of several outfalls throughout the city, and even though we didn't find any illicit discharges from those outfalls, we did find illicit discharges elsewhere, two of them during the last year, that were addressed and reported to the DNR. And we have construction site pollution control and post-construction stormwater management. So we have sites that are recorded with the city under permit that have private stormwater management facilities. We receive yearly reports from these owners. And also for our construction sites, we conduct inspection of those sites for erosion control and site pollution control. We didn't have any enforcement actions on those items. Then we have a prevention section for municipal stormwater pollution prevention. We take several actions to help limit pollution of the waters of the state. Again, I'm not going to read it out, but everything is detailed in your memo. And finally, we have the stormwater quality management and the Milwaukee River TMDL requirement. So TMDL stands for the Total Maximum Daily Load. We have to put together efforts to limit the total of total suspended solids, total phosphorus, and bacteria that can enter the Milwaukee River. We did some modeling regarding this, and we have taken actions towards the total suspended solids and total phosphorus, and this year, we're starting with further development of maps and action to take care of the bacteria impact. We already have some ordinances in place, but we'll have to implement some projects. We'll start some design this year and some construction in the coming years up to the end of the permit period, which ends in 2024.
Thank you, Max. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address the Common Council, please step up to the podium to be heard.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. All those in favor for closing public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. Consent agenda is in your packet, and it's items one through 14, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen.
Sparks.
Sparks.
Oh, was it Jed?
Model and Sparks.
Somebody over there beat me.
Model and Dolnick. Any questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our action items tonight start with an ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the city of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use for approximately .3 acres of land located on the north side of West Decore Road, west of the Eisenbaum State Trail. And Jim, you're going to take us through several of these, I think, so take it away.
Thank you. I have the next two items. One is the ordinance for the comprehensive plan. So the Holy Angels Church has acquired the .3 acres and are looking to redevelop that as part of the cemetery area. So as a part of this, to start the process for this, we're asking the council to consider a change in the comprehensive plan from the industrial area to an institutional area to help facilitate that redevelopment. So tonight, we're just asking the council to endorse the ordinance to change that land use, and this would help to facilitate that. Staff feels that this would be a good use for the continued area that's landlocked.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Sternig and Burquist. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is an ordinance to rezone approximately .3 acres of land located on the north side of West Decore Road, west of the Eisenbaum State Trail, from M2 Heavy Industrial to I1 Institutional and Public Service District by Holy Angels Cemetery.
Thank you. So this is the actual ordinance to rezone that property from the industrial to the institutional. Again, this is for the actual use for the cemetery, so the cemetery use is permitted under the I1, thus the need for the change of zoning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Burquist and Zingshaim. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution approving the offer to purchase city-owned land to GenX Holdings LLC, the developer for property known as Tax Parcels 291-1120313006 and 291-1120313006. Oh, I think there's a typo there. There's a typo there. Yeah. Well, so I just want to run through what these next three ones are, and I would ask that we correct the typo I was copying and pasting the new tax keys off the website. So the next three items are approving the three offers to purchase that are pending before the city. The title company is going to request a resolution authorizing signers, authorizing the sale from the city, just as a corporate resolution. So the first one is the one for GenX Holdings and the Industrial Park. That one is approving both, ratifying both the offer to purchase and the developer's agreement that had previously been considered. Number four is the developer's agreement, but it within the, for F Street, within that developer's agreement, we are transferring some city-owned property, so we're approving that. And then the last one is the resolution approving the sale of vacant land based on the counteroffer that was approved at the last meeting. We don't have closing dates for any of these yet, but this is getting it in place so that if and, you know, when the developer requests, we're not held up just because we're in between meetings. So I'll take number three first, with the tax parcel edited to be the correct tax parcel number.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So Model and Allen, and we'll correct the tax parcel number. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the resolution approving the offer to purchase city-owned land in TIF number 12, and the tax parcels are listed in your packet.
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Allen. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five is the resolution approving sale of vacant land on 12th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any comments, questions on this one? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is a resolution accepting funds from Washington County to supplement increased lifeguard and beach house attendant pay.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Allen with the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burquist. Jay, why don't you take this one?
Deal. Washington County approached us last year when we were going through the lifeguard shortage within our city, and also facilitated a meeting with the YMCA, School District, and also the city of Hartford. Washington County offered some ARPA funding to assist with lifeguard pay. As we, if you recall, some of the conversations from last year, we were going up from $11 an hour to $15 an hour, and honestly, we thought we were good. That was a pretty significant increase, one that we hadn't seen in a long, long time in part-time or seasonal employees. And when we could not recruit lifeguards at $15 an hour, by the time the county had offered their additional funds to maybe potentially even further increase that, it was just too late. The summer season was upon us. We had already started draining the pool, pond, and there was just no time to enact and train lifeguards in that short of period of time. But if you recall, there was a task force that was formed. Former Alderman Randy Keeler led that task force and did a great job working with the Parks Department and interested parties within the field. He hosted a bunch of meetings and discussed all of the options. There was the potential option of filling the pond and making it more of a waiting area. That received some not-so-great feedback from the community and from many of you on this Alderman team. The conclusion of the task force was really to find lifeguards and do it sooner, and if you have to pay them, we're probably going to have to pay them more. And Mike Yench, Parks Director, and Ryan, our new Recreation Supervisor, have done a great job in doing that. They got after it early. They worked hard and collaboratively with the YMCA. You know this, we're happy to report, we have a full lifeguard team ready to roll. They're about ready to fill the pond. Maybe they started doing that, but we will be open in June. We'll be open for a couple of months and have a close date at the end of August planned, and hopefully just have a great summer. Mayor Ongard and County Executive Josh Shoman began conversations regarding that potential funding again. It was funding that they had offered for a series of years to start out at a higher rate and then lower the percentage over the next few years as the ARPA money ran out through 2026. And we had a meeting just last Friday to discuss that. We do have a press release that's ready to roll, assuming that there's positive action by the council this evening. And the terms are listed for you. They are 100% funded of the increase in salaries on an hour, actual hour basis. So if it's a real yucky summer and we're not open as much, then that number will be smaller. And if it's an awesome hot summer and we're open every day and able to stay open late, then that number that we'll be asking for on a monthly basis from Washington County will be greater. That gap in salary is what we're asking for, 100% payment in 2023, and then 75% in '24, 50% in 2025, and then the last year of the ARPA money, 25% in 2026, and then just to be clear, 100% funding, or challenge the Parks Team and Recreation Team to talk through with potential donors if there is such a thing for that ongoing lifeguard funding. We did have some individuals step up last year and say that, hey, we'd at least be willing to be a part of that conversation if it happened. So stay tuned for that. Nothing new to report on that topic at this time. But this, before you is a receipt of additional dollars into our recreation program from Washington County. We're thankful for that and excited to report that this resolution is before you and that we're ready to roll with a press release. Any questions? I can attempt to answer them.
Dolnick.
Is there anyone here from Washington County?
I thought Jamie was going to be here, but no, I don't see anybody from there.
If someone from Washington County had been here, I would ask, why is it that Washington County charges fees to enter many of their county parks, but they're going to give money to support a city of West Bend Park? I don't understand that. If Washington County was here, I would have asked them, is this money for sure coming from ARPA? You don't really know for sure, do you, Jay?
I don't. The honest answer is I don't. The timeline is respective of ARPA, as far as it concluding in 2026. Very distinctly in last year, 2022, when the offer was made, it was ARPA-related, but County Executive Shoman did make the conscious decision to not include ARPA money in this resolution.
Well, that's what bothers me. This is part of the 26 million that the county got from the federal government. We cannot get the county executive or the county board, including supervisors who are supposed to be representing us, to send back any of the sales tax money that our residents are paying. They won't even consider it, but they're going to open the coffers because it's federal money. It just, to me, is a distasteful exercise. I wanted the council to know that the lifeguard, the salary budget for the Recreation Enterprise Fund was increased 26% for this year. It went from $191,000 to $257,000. That was primarily because of the lifeguards. So we are funded for this year. It went out to our taxpayers. I'm not sure what happens if we accept this money from the county for a use that we've already fully funded.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Model?
I do know, just being new on the Park and Rec Committee, I do know that there was, what, the one thing that there was a little bit of nerves about was the amount of potential money that was going to go out. It's like you said, we had a really hot, long summer, and, and all of the lifeguards took full advantage of the bonus program, being able to, be able to cover that. So I guess I, I do see some advantage to taking some funds from where we can get it, you know? If we have to wrangle around to get money out of the county, I guess this is one way to do it, you know? Not the best way, but here we are.
Appreciate those comments. Any more comments, discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, seven to one. We will move on to our reports. We had a plan commission meeting held on May 2nd of 2023. Items 1 through 5 in our action list tonight was all discussed during plan commission, and we reviewed a couple of site plans for Kettle Marine Metal Products, as well as the building that's commonly referred to as the Brazen Pan Building, and site plans look good. Dolnick, Model, anything else you want to add for plan commission report?
Well, the certified survey map for the Sand Drive project, because there's been a change in ownership, and I only bring, we usually don't get into CSMs here, but it's only because that thing's been of interest to the, to the neighborhood. Nothing has changed as far as what will actually go there. And you covered the, the building renovation, and we also had the site plan for the $75,000. I don't know if you just mentioned that, the Forge Place, the $75,000 square foot Kettle Marine Metal Products got approved, so that was good news.
Yep. Any questions? Yes, Allen?
You mentioned a change of ownership for the Sand Drive. Is that going to have any effect to the projects or the timelines, or do we know?
Well, we don't get into timelines, but not for the, we have an approved site plan, as I recall, right, Mark? I've lost track. So the site plan was approved, so no. This was purely an internal matter amongst the developers, and so there had to be an accounting with the change in the survey map.
Before we go into closed session, are there any other items for follow-up communications or announcements?
Just go to the order?
Yes, this is it.
Go downtown! Walk! Eat! Shop! Have fun! It's great!
Drink.
You can even, if you go down during the day, you can, you know, it's like big Tonka Toys. It's cool. So, so go out and support downtown.
Good. Our future meeting calendar, we have a library board and Tourism Commission meeting tomorrow. The Bid Marketing Committee meeting and Parks and Rec meet on May 23rd and 25th respectively, and that takes us through the month of May. Go ahead.
Just remind, remind the people Memorial Day Parade will be 9:30 on Monday, Memorial Day, and we'll be meeting up at the Old Courthouse.
We do have an item appropriate for closed session tonight, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties. Our discussion tonight will be a possible fire department land purchase.
So moves.
Model?
Second.
And Allen? Any discussion? And I'll ask the clerk to call roll.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Sparks?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Zingheim?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now in closed session, and I'll just inform the public that we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session tonight. So thank you all, and have a great night.